Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Acton Selectmen's Meeting of March 3rd. It's just a little after 6:00. We're going to call the meeting to order. First, we'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the five United States states around America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one government, and this is our duty and service to all.
Now, before we get started, we wanted to, as a board, show our appreciation to William and Jacqueline Lottz tonight. Let's see here. Mr. Lottz and his wife have put in over forty years to our town here, most prominently as election clerks, but other things too. So we just wanted to have a dedication to both of them tonight. And Mr. Jim Driscoll is here somewhere, and he had some stuff he wanted to say, so you want to come up, Jim?
A little bit of an attempt to try to capture some things about Bill, quite the character. Two thousand and five, I was elected to the Board of Selectmen. And that year, Bill was honored with the dedication of the Town Report, and I had the honor of searching some of the history around town and the committees and putting together an article for him, you know? My first year on the Board, I was asked to gather thoughts to try to encapsulate and capture some of what Bill Lottz has meant to the town of Acton. My first experience with Bill was in nineteen ninety-eight, my first year on the school committee. During the budget deliberations, a small faction of anti-school folks decided that the Gifted and Talented Program had little to no value for the students of Acton, essentially the same group that years later lobbied to remove foreign language from the school curriculum. The group consisted of a mix of folks, some that didn't take the time to inform themselves of the Gifted and Talented Program, some that clung to the teachers and parents pretending to support the school for political gain, only to vote against the school at every turn, and a few that genuinely believed there was no value in the Gifted and Talented Program because their minds were made up. You never had to worry where Bill Lottz stood. Bill's philosophy was the opportunity from child to child and family to family. Bill was adamant and determined to understand every article that went before the townspeople, both school and town articles. Only living in town for a couple of years, I didn't know a lot of folks in town. Newly elected to the school committee, Bill at the time, when I was newly elected, Bill at the time was the chairman of the Warrant and Finance Committee. The issue pertaining to the Gifted and Talented Program became a subject of debate, heated debate at every meeting at the school committee level. One morning, Tom Cashin showed up at my house, standing in my kitchen at seven thirty in the morning, lecturing me of the importance of education and the programs offered at the school. He was literally pointing at my faces, inches away from me, passionately pleading. It wasn't an hour later that I received my first phone call from Bill Lottz. Over the years, I learned quickly that if Tom Cashin showed up at my home like a passionate rabid dog, that a call from Bill Lottz would surely follow. They were Acton's all-time greatest one-two punch when it came to protecting programs within the school for the children. But they would also take the time to make sure information was available for folks who sincerely didn't understand or were confused or had questions in preparation for town meeting. I remember bumping into Cammie Davis, the art teacher, shortly after Tom Cashin's visit and Bill's first phone call. I said to Cammie, geez, I think these two guys are a little bit over the top. Cammie Davis laughed at me, and she said, Jim, you'll never find two more compassionate and good men, and she couldn't have been more correct with her comment, and time would prove that. During our first phone conversation, Bill asked me for information pertaining to the Gifted and Talented. Out of courtesy, I asked the superintendent, Gloria Leverley, for help putting together a packet for Bill. I showed up at Bill's house, I knocked at the door a few times, and there was no answer. As I was leaving, Bill came walking out from the barn, disheveled, with some type of straw hat on and a shovel in his hand. His first words were, don't mind me, I'm cleaning the llama stall. We talked for a few minutes, and I left him with the information that he requested. I remember driving away, thinking to myself that day, wow, this guy's an interesting cat. Years later, I visited Bill and Jackie's home again. I sat across from Bill in his living room. He had one of his Basset Hounds sitting on his lap and one leaning up against his leg as he sat in a big stuffed chair. During the whole conversation, he'd stop now and again and talk to his dogs. I rubbed their heads with affection. I left that day, I remember, I left that day, I remember driving home and saying to myself, wow, this guy's an interesting cat. Another time I visited Bill's, as I pulled up, Bill was in the driveway. He was just climbing out of an antique Cadillac or Lincoln Town Car, I'm not sure which. Beautifully restored. Was it? Thanks, Bill. Beautifully restored car. We talked for a few minutes. He shared with me his love of cars and especially antiques. I remember driving away that day, saying to myself, wow, this guy is definitely an interesting cat. My last time visiting Bill's house, he showed me another hobby or passion of his. He had a train set assembled in his den. The size and articulate layout of the village surrounding the train set was nothing short of spectacular. This train set in detail was emblematic of a scene from the movie The Rain Man. I remember driving away that day and once again saying to myself, wow, this guy's an interesting cat. Later on, once I got to know Bill, I would send him my real estate clients that had issues that required an engineer. One of the clients called me up after Bill had visited the property and finalized the structural building report. My client told me that Bill was a genius, and his support helped him realize and visualize the potential and different options for the building. I responded to my client by saying, I'm not sure about the genius part, but I will say that Bill is definitely an interesting cat. Bill's communication was and is genuine and clear, and he always backed up his words with tangible actions. I miss the days when Bill, Tom Chase, Lorraine Yetton would argue and converse at budget meetings, but always left as friends and understood that they were neighbors and members of the same community. Decency mattered to them. From my perspective, I see Acton as a community of people that takes care of our vulnerable. You folks here at Town Hall are a great example of that. You've done a phenomenal job, by the way. Acton has always taken care of our folks that may have stumbled upon hard terms, of those that may not have been capable of organizing opportunities that are available to them. It's people like Bill Lottz that fought for those that might need a helping hand or at a minimum, a chance for something better. I've never seen or been part of a town as caring, as giving, or giving as Acton. I'm grateful for all Bill has done as a committee member over the years, and I'm grateful for all Jackie and Bill did over the years with the annual turkey dinners that funded thousands of dollars of education and scholarships for Acton kids. But I'll always be more grateful that I had the opportunity to meet them and call them both friend. You see, Bill and Jackie have decided, Bill and Jackie could have decided not to be involved with the town, living a comfortable life on a small farm, but instead they leaped in headfirst and made a difference. What a great legacy to give so much back as people when the majority of their views, stances, and town meeting votes never benefited them personally. We don't beat the reaper in this life by living longer. We beat the river reaper by living well and living fully, for the reaper is going to come for all of us. The question is, what do we do from the time we are born and when the time he shows up? Because when he shows up, it's too late to do all the things that you're gonna kind of get around to. Bill and Jackie Lottz don't have to worry about their legacy. Their legacy will be of two good people. They lived the full life. The best trait of these two good people are the nameless, unremembered acts of kindness and love. Good people are a blessing to their family, their friends, and their community. We will miss the Lottzes, and we wish them all the love, health, and happiness as they move away from God's country. And we thank them for all they have given themselves to make Acton a better place to live. Thanks.
When Jackie and I bought our home on Acton Ridge Road in nineteen seventy-six, the town population was about seven hundred and fifty. Some of you may not remember that. And Jackie and I decided, we loved this little town, we loved our little house that had basically no sewer system, no water system, no insulation, no heating system, almost no electrical system, and on and on, but we bought it and we put a lot of time, money, and love into that house. And believe it or not, in a couple of months, I'm going to turn eighty-nine. I'm still working for a living as a consulting engineer. I've just written a book that's going to be out on Amazon next month. And it got to the point where a year ago, we said, we've got to have a house on one level. Even my poor Basset Hound couldn't make it up those stairs to the second floor. And so we started looking a year ago, and we wanted to stay in Maine. We felt, we're Mainers since we moved to Maine in seventy-four. But we looked, our real estate agent looked, we looked as far as North Freiburg, we looked in Biddeford, we looked in Sanford, we looked in Warburg, we looked in Arundel in Lebanon, and our real estate agent could not find a place on one floor in a reasonable neighborhood that we could afford. And we sold our house a couple of months ago, and a couple from New York City said they want in the house. And we had a contract that we would be out by a certain date in February, and we had no place to go, so they gave us another three weeks. And our contract must be, we must be out of the house next week, and my kids were saying, Dad, where are you going? And I said, I don't know, but I know we've got to be out of here by the tenth of March. And so my daughter Valerie, who lives in Burlington, Vermont, she immediately started looking for a place to live, and she found a lovely single-story house in a nice neighborhood for a very reasonable price. She sent us pictures, we said we liked it. It was a long way away, a hundred and ninety miles from here, and we liked it, and so she went over there last week and she wrote a check and bought the house for us. Now I owe my daughter Valerie a lot of money. But this is not something we wanted to do. We never planned on leaving Acton. There's a cemetery out in our back pasture. We've been blessed with wonderful neighbors, the Langleys. Oh, golly, you couldn't ask for nicer neighbors than the Langleys, all of you. And we didn't want to leave the area, but there's no real estate for us to buy. It's a single-story that we could afford. I mean, literally, we went as far as North Freiburg. And our real estate agent looked and looked and looked, we looked at a lot of places. Two of the houses we liked, and we said, put in an offer, and our real estate agent put in an offer immediately and was told by the selling agent, oh, we sold that an hour ago. Well, anyway, it's been a great ride. I've had a lot of interesting experiences. Jim, thank you very much for that very generous discussion. As Jen knows, I have been an election clerk at, I think, every election since nineteen eighty, as I recall. Some interesting experiences. Some years before we had the machine, we were in here till one, two o'clock in the morning counting ballots. And despite what some people say, our elections are fair and honest and correct. Believe me, there is no horsing around in the election process or in counting ballots. This is an honest situation and true and correct. In the meantime, Jackie and I have involved with putting on turkey dinners in this very room for fundraising since, I think our first turkey dinner was actually a spaghetti dinner in nineteen eighty, and we've had a lot of fun. We've gotten a lot of money over those forty-some-odd years. It's been a good experience, and thank you all, and I thank you for being here, and it's nice to see my neighbors here. And it's, I've got to go home. My wife's children drove up this week from Missouri to help us move. Am I boring you that much?
I want to make sure you speak to your wife.
No, thank you, you're very kind.
Keep talking.
No, I can go on for another hour or two, but buy my book, it's going to be on Amazon. It's going to be on Amazon next month. It's only going to be ninety dollars, but you can save three bucks by buying an electronic edition of the book. There's, I wrote a hundred and fifty thousand words and had a hundred photographs in the book. And right now, I've got the first proof edition off the press that I've got a press, I've got a review, and right now, we're moving, the first truckload of our furniture and stuff left today at two o'clock for St. Albans, Vermont. And we've got to be out of the house by Monday afternoon. So, again, thank you.
Bill, we have a certificate of appreciation for you, for both you and your wife.
Oh, wow.
For forty years of service.
Oh, wow.
It's not much for forty years of service, but maybe you can find a spot on your wall to hang it.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Sorry Jackie couldn't be here, but her kids are there. They just arrived at three o'clock. I've got to go.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I was going to ask if anybody else wanted to speak, but I guess he's scooting out on us.
One of the, can we both jump down a little?
Yep, we could. I've signed, oh, here she comes. Whenever you're ready, Jen.
Okay, not too bad of a list this week to update you on. The first thing is regarding the land use department with the new code enforcement officer settling in this week. He's hoping to start advertising walk-in hours from nine to twelve, and then recommending and encouraging appointments from twelve to four. He knows it's going to take a little time to get people on that schedule. The doors will remain unlocked the entire time, and certainly they won't turn anybody away, but he's looking for your blessing to advertise that schedule.
Walk-ins from what, nine to?
Nine to twelve.
And then?
From twelve to four.
Okay.
Thursdays obviously will be a little different, planning board meetings, so.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
Our next item to discuss with you is road bridge, and I'm glad to see a couple of the road commissioners here, I'll send an email as well, but I did as you instructed last week, reached out to the town of Milton to see if they were interested in having conversations with you about it. They certainly are, it's an interesting time for them because they have got their town elections next week, and it sounds like their public works director and even including the selectmen I spoke to are all being challenged, and he doesn't know who's going to be where next week, so he basically told me to call back, see who was going to, you know.
Good idea.
Who was in those seats. I also did have a conversation with Mr. Bean, who is the individual that quoted you and Wakefield the price for the canal bridge. And he's coming next Tuesday at Town Hall, we've got a big file on it, he's just going to look at it, it's not going to cost you anything, he's going to go over and look at the bridge, and hopefully by then, we'll have a meeting with Milton, and you guys can all kind of get together, and we'll make sure to include the road commissioners and the road committee. So that's what we've done so far.
Right.
Our next item is regarding mooring. So you recall, several months ago, you heard from a couple property owners in town that wanted, really want you to move forward with some type of mooring ordinance. I have since been contacted by members of the Maine Harbor Association, variety of emails that have gone back and forth, and I've also been contacted by the Doyle's again. They really feel like this is a town issue, and that the town is required to have a harbor master to enforce some of these ordinances. If you recall, the way that it ended last time is that you guys didn't really support or not support it, you suggested they maybe start the mooring process by petition. Unfortunately, the Doyle's are non-residents of the state of Maine, so they don't qualify to start a petition. In speaking with the harbor masters, I'm still not finding anything in writing that ties it to being a town legal responsibility. You know, there's conversation about, you know, once the land ends, how much of the water, if any, that the property owner owns.
They own the high-water mark.
Right, and that's what they're saying, the six feet out is what it sounds like. Unless you guys have the answer, I'm hoping for permission to seek legal advice on what our, you know, responsibilities are in this case, because we just, I don't have the answers for them.
I would go with legal. I just, I mean, I don't know the rules and regulations.
We've had one complaint. I wanted to see more interest.
Is it just one? I feel like we've had more.
We get calls on it.
But the amount of interest, I was hoping, I wanted to see, go out to petition, see if there was some interest in it before we decided, you know, get a harbor master, and of course, you know, we're talking about steel and water, that we'd be taking jurisdiction
And who takes care of that, and, yep.
I just, I don't know, for right now, I don't see a big call for it.
Yeah, I mean, the state-owned water part of it, how do we have jurisdiction over that?
And again, like I said.
And that's what I was, yeah.
And the problem is, is as far as I know, and I'm no lawyer, but I was always under the impression that you own to the high-water mark, which is, could be on your property, you know, so. But until I see more interest and more issues, I'd rather not make an issue out of, make a mountain out of a molehill.
Does our new code officer maybe have any input?
Yeah, I can reach out, maybe he.
Yeah, see if he ran into it. He came from a town that had ponds and lakes as well, so he might have some thoughts on it, without getting too involved with legal.
Okay, so I'll bring you his opinion back next week, and then they are requesting, then if, you know, if you're not willing to get a legal opinion, then they want to meet with you again. Next, we'll just kind of FYI, Maine Local Roads is having a Zoom meeting regarding stretching your budget during these difficult times. It's road-related, so I sent it to all of you, the road commissioners and the chair. They also sent an email about winter salt purchase and getting in on the state, salt purchases, getting in on the state cog, so check for that.
Has the town ever done that before?
We, that's what we use, yeah, and we use that number to compare to the company that we get it from. So we usually let them go out to bid and then use that number in comparison.
And what ends up happening, we end up coming up with the same number as the call.
It's usually the same.
Using the same people year after year.
I just was wondering if you ever, if we ever had.
Our number is comparable.
Okay.
Our next is just a public hearing notice. The planning board is holding on Thursday, March eighteenth, and this is going to be to discuss the amendments to the Town Act and zoning ordinance relative to timber harvesting, dock, shoreline construction, and the short-term rental units. So it's on Thursday at six o'clock. In your packet, you should have the monthly updates from the sheriff's department in regards to the contract. As always, they give you the notables. We've got, what, three, five, six of them, and it looks like Acton made a little more than half of them, so information you may want to read on their notable happenings. So the next item I want to discuss with you is town meeting. So we had conversations last week about, you know, once we saw what the planning board was moving forward for zoning ordinances, what are we going to do with town meeting? We're getting to a point where we're going to have to make a decision if it's on a ballot or if we're going to have an open town meeting. We had the conversation about reaching out to the fair, which I did. Our election is scheduled for Tuesday, June eighth. That day can't be changed. Certainly, we know at this point nomination papers are out, and that's calculated from that date, so that date doesn't change. The following Saturday at the fair is June twelfth, and that day is booked at the Acton Fairgrounds. Sunday, June thirteenth is available, and the following Saturday, June nineteenth is available. So I sent an email to Maine Municipal because I wanted to clarify whether we could A, do it on Sunday, even if, you know, you may or may not want to, or if we could go as far out as the nineteenth. And they did confirm, they did confirm that you essentially have fourteen days to do the second half, so you could do it a Sunday or you could do it the nineteenth. So we really need to, you know, if you decide you want to do it at the fairgrounds, we need to schedule it with the fair and think about, you know, starting to organize it and advertise it. We also need to talk about the school and what that's going to look like, because if we choose to stick everything on a ballot, they have a way of, one of the emergency COVID laws that went through, that they can do their entire school budget on one question. They could have done it last year, they chose not to. So if you go to a secret ballot on that eighth, they could put their question on there, but we can't put the zoning on there. If you decide to have the open meeting, you know, are we, you know, pushing the school off until that date? I mean, I don't know that the restrictions are going to be lifted enough by their proposed date of the end of April that we could legally and safely have an open town meeting. You know, we're more, you know, if that fifty, we talk about this all the time, if that fifty-first voter comes, then what do you do?
Right.
So I need you to kind of give me some direction of what you'd like to do regarding town meeting.
Is it still fifty outside?
Well, no, it's a hundred outside.
So we're talking if the school wants to do inside?
Yeah, because I didn't check that April date.
Now, what if we, could the school do theirs by ballot and ask to ours outside?
You could, yeah, you'd.
So the school could still have their?
All their questions.
One question, whatever, however they wanted to do it, do it by ballot.
What if they prefer an open town meeting?
Or, well.
Well, then if they preferred it, then could we do it? Yeah.
So are you thinking that you want me to try to get this organized at the fair, the fairgrounds, and have it outside?
I would try for the thirteenth, I mean.
You would put it on Sunday or the following Saturday?
Why not a Sunday?
The only problem is Sunday.
What's the problem?
I don't know.
Yeah, maybe we wouldn't get it.
I don't charge what people do.
True, okay, so the nineteenth, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I'd put it off to the following Saturday.
Okay, so the following Saturday.
To the next open Saturday for us, for the municipal side, and see if the, see if the school wants to go by ballot on that Tuesday.
And I don't, I mean, I've never gotten the impression, I mean, they like their open town meetings, and we're certainly hoping for the open town meeting in April. I mean, I guess I'd have to calculate the days and timelines, I don't know if, you know, if the governor doesn't extend the executive order the next time, or she, maybe she opens the inside to a hundred people, it's possible the school could be done in May, but at that point, should we just do it in June? So may I have a conversation with Jonathan Ross, but as far as.
Yeah, see if they'd want to.
Town, I should go ahead and start reserving the nineteenth and move forward?
I would think. I think that's, I mean, I'm relatively sure that everyone likes to have the open town meeting. Personally, I prefer the ballot side because you get more people, but I think we should do the open town meeting and use the fairgrounds and.
And we should be able to do it kind of undercover if it's raining and stuff.
Well, yeah, I mean.
I mean, you've got that big area.
I mean, the idea is with the grants, they would still have to do social distancing.
Right.
They've got the center part that you can, and the gap seats at, because some people won't be able to make those, I mean.
Exactly.
We're going to block a side off to make sure we're checking in on one side, I mean, it's going to be a process to put it together, but.
I mean, doing it by the ballot, it worked all right. Last year, we got a lot more votes than we normally, I mean, normally get.
Which was nice.
If we had sixty people at town meeting, like, yay, you know, that's a big deal. at town meetings, yay, you know, that's, that's a big deal. But the only issue is, is the zoning stuff there. I think that's really something that has really got to be spoke out.
Yep. Especially why we should do it.
Yeah, based on the length. I mean, we talked about last week. But we just can't put those zoning questions on a ballot. I mean, they're.
I mean, you can, but it's, yeah, it's a whole other process.
With the chart, I don't know how you'd ever do that, you know? And you also have a, your citizens petition that's going to need to be addressed. So that will go on the same open town meeting.
Okay.
All right. So we'll reach out to the 19th and we'll reach out to Jonathan and see what we're, what we're going to do about the school.
All right.
Uh, next is just an FYI that the REC has called a meeting on March 12th at 5:30. I did share with them your approval for them to start the baseball season. Lori reached out to me today and asked if the town had, you know, a bunch of COVID rules and regulations that they could kind of incorporate into baseball. I mean, it was kind of different, but I'm going to ask her to reach out to some surrounding towns. I know that Sanford, Chapley, Lebanon Hall are starting baseball. So hopefully they can come up with some things. Mr. Sinekow was in yesterday. David will tell you, he was here for a brief time as well to look at the heating system. We're still trying to put some numbers together before Saturday's budget meeting. He's got a couple of ideas. Do you want to elaborate on what he was thinking?
Yeah, well, we originally talked about doing the wall-mounted air conditioning units. But his concern was that when the power goes out, whether or not our generator has enough to be able to run all of it.
Hopefully not.
So he came up with another idea about replacing the furnace that we have to have an insert that goes in place of that one that can do heat and air conditioning. So he's going to give us some numbers on that. He's going to give us the best options for this building here. So hopefully he'll have that by Friday.
All right. Reminder that the staff is doing the mandatory AED and fire extinguisher training on the March 11th, which is Thursday at 2 o'clock. And budget meeting Saturday at 9:00. That's all I have for this week.
All righty. Warrant and bills. I think we've all done those.
I've signed, yeah.
Yep. Okay. So I need an approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor. All opposed. All right. Minutes of the last meeting. I just read these, went through them, and they all look good. So it's February 24th. I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes of the last meeting for the 24th.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any conversation, anything? No? Okay. All in favor. All opposed. All right. So those are done. Next is department heads committee chair updates. First would be warrant and finance draft policy that we worked up.
So for the, for the other two gentlemen, so Kim met with me yesterday and kind of filled us in on warrant and finance meeting. She said that she believed that there was still some misunderstanding on how or where information is gathered and that some of the committee members still might not, the process might not be clear. So I sat down with the treasurer and we drafted a policy as we believe you are, you know, as we believe you want it. So I was hoping that we could go through that and tell us what you think. Certainly, you know, this is your policy. Do as you will with it. We're just trying to make it clear based on the instruction you've given us at the last two meetings. So any member of the warrant and finance may make a request for information of any department in town to the chair of the warrant and finance. The selectmen have waived the need of the warrant and finance to vote on said request. The chair of the warrant and finance committee shall then contact the town administrator and shall share the request of his or her fellow committee member. The town administrator will begin, will immediately begin working on the request and does not need to wait for selectman approval. Once the information is gathered, the town administrator will email all information requested to the entire warrant and finance committee, board of selectmen, and any department head that the information pertains to. If a warrant and finance committee member prefers to have a hard copy of this information, he or she can make a blanket request at the beginning of their term to the town administrator to have the documents mailed to them at home. Should any member of the warrant and finance, including the chair, want to meet with a department head, committee chair, or staff member, he or she shall make the request to the full board of selectmen at a regularly scheduled meeting. From there, if approved by the selectmen, said person will attend the next regularly scheduled warrant and finance meeting. So we tried to find a way to make sure that it's step by step, that it still gives them the opportunity to meet with department heads. I knew that there was some conversation at the last meeting that they want to meet with the treasurer. They've got some, some valid questions. The idea is that the treasurer go to that meeting so that she can share the information with the full committee at once. This is what we took from your direction. Certainly, if that's changed, that's why we're here.
Okay.
And I did email Dennis and tell him that this would be discussed as well.
Okay. What do you guys, I hear from Dennis first, or what do you think?
Yeah, he hasn't seen the actual. He just knows it's going to be discussed.
Do you want to look at this, sir?
No, that's all right. You read it.
All right. Yep. Just kind of what we said at our last meeting. I just kind of wanted it in black and white. So I know what's going on.
And again, my understanding was there was simple things. For example, we didn't have to bother Jen with it. And I gave a few examples of what I was talking about before. And she said, you know, that was fine. I, I said the other night at the warrant and finance committee meeting that anything that was of any amount, anything that different liaisons couldn't get the information from the department to let me know. And I would go through Jen and go through that process. Every month, every department had to get, say, an expense disbursement thing from, from Michelle. And so obviously, I would assume, I believe they probably do know what they have for money and where their money's gone and, and things like that. I don't think maybe somebody has, Jen, other than me. Tried to go around the chair asking questions or Jen, going through Jen. I don't, I mean, haven't gone to Michelle or that I know of.
Nobody's insinuating that.
No.
Kim came to me and asked me to put it in step-by-step process. And just so you know too, we're trying to protect everybody involved because as you know, you know, there is human error, you know, when we're sending emails or when whatever happens. So the idea was that if, if that expense report is needed from the transfer station, like one of your members, as you know, went to the transfer station recently and trying to get these documents, he doesn't have them. Maybe the treasurer gave them. God love him. He doesn't have them. He came to us to get them. We have to, you know, revert back to what the process is. We want to make sure, we just want to make sure that everybody gets the information. And we're trying to be helpful. I mean, you continue to say not to bother me, but that's what you pay me to do. So it's okay to contact me and let me send this to your entire committee so everybody gets it, the selectmen get it, the department head gets it. Everybody knows what the committee is working on.
I've got no issues with that, Jen. But what I don't understand is why, and things like that, if, if the manager of the transfer station didn't have that information for him, then that member should have contacted me and had me try to find it. I mean, that's what I said the other night to me.
And you thought that if this was in writing, that all the committee members could get this as well as the department heads? And maybe he doesn't know, listening to the conversation.
Exactly. But I still don't understand why, I'll just use me as an example, why I couldn't sit down with one of the road commissioners and ask them what they've done and what they spent money on and what they're planning on spending money on without going through the town hall. I don't understand that.
Well, that part of it though, it says that if you want, well, if you want to meet with them, that you just make the request to the selectmen. The selectmen just want to make sure that, you know, because like we'll talk about the warrant and finance meeting from this week. You have a lot of questions on the audit, a lot of great follow-up questions. And does any of the fund balance and everything that you guys discussed? They didn't want to put, you know, so Michelle, you and Michelle are going to have this conversation. She's going to answer all these questions. They think that it's better served if she comes to the committee and answers them all at once, rather so that you're not have to take her information and bring it back. So they're just trying to take out the middleman. Let the road commissioner come, explain everything. You know, after we get through this budget meeting on Saturday, it's hopeful that a lot of these questions are answered, you know, short of the audit questions, because that's not really, you know, that's not part of the discussion. But the idea is just to give the whole committee all of the information at once. And that's just because of past practice. You know, now we've got a member now twice that's contacted me that hasn't been notified for two meetings. Do you know what I mean? We're just trying to help, to make sure that we send.
That's not true. He wasn't.
No, that is true.
No, it isn't. What happened? We've only had, we've had two meetings.
Their first one was a typo. Correct. I'm sorry. They were a typo. He didn't get it.
And you're right about the other one. And any other committee that's in this town, their meetings get put up on the website.
Yeah.
Which you do all the time, Jen. And every meeting that we've had has been advertised at a selectman's meeting.
Right.
Okay. But you don't have to, I mean.
Should the committee members have to watch the selectman meetings to know their own committee is having a meeting?
No, they can look at the email.
Right. And I don't disagree. That's why we put this blurb in there about if you don't email, that shouldn't be your responsibility. I mean, you're sending it to all seven or eight members, just like you normally would. We are offering to take that if they don't do emails, that we'll send them the hard copy.
And that's what you did at the last meeting. You told me you did.
Yeah. And, and yes.
And I also called.
You must have gotten yours in the mail by now.
Yeah. Well, I meant about the meeting that we had, our last meeting, and I also called.
And not just warrant and finance chairman, but any committee that, you know, does anything on, you know, when they're, they're sending stuff out, it should be a blanket to their whole committee. That way, you as a chairman, whether it's you or whoever else, they've covered themselves. You've done what you needed to.
And I tried to do that.
Right. And I know it was a mistake.
That's my ability.
Right. So from here on out, we're just asking everybody to, you know, if you're a chairman, make sure, anything that goes out, you know, make sure you've got all your, you know, all your members and they all, all get it. That way, you're covered. If somebody says I didn't get it, well, yeah, I did send it. And we do have it on the website. And we also will say at our meetings during our announcements. So there's three different ways. So we don't have to call people and remind them. We've, we've done the steps we, you know, you need to as, you know, as a committee chair.
I appreciate that, but I still don't understand why, what is the reasoning for not wanting anybody to talk to these department heads until you guys give us permission or give them permission? What's the reason? Any citizen can ask somebody the same questions. And they don't have to go through the board of selectmen to get permission to get this information.
Well, the board consider revising it to the sense that as long as the department, or at least, I mean, the staff, they want it done at a regular meeting because they want it advertised and they want the whole committee to meet with the person at once. So, I mean, you could remove the part that, you know, that they, they make the request, you know, they make, they make a request that they're going to ask to meet with whatever department head, and then that meeting take place at the next, at the next warrant and finance. They're trying to alleviate, you know, a meeting with one member and one department head, and then you have to take it back to a full committee. The department heads want to be able to answer the questions to the full committee.
But the board of selectmen does the same thing. They have liaisons to different departments or committees or whatever, and then they report back what's going on. It's the same thing.
But there's some history, Dennis. I mean, there's some history of, you know, Virginia made some valid points and some of the art, you know, some of the articles that we continue to see, there's, the department heads just want to be able to address the committee as a whole and answer the questions to the committee. I mean, and I'm talking from the town hall. I don't know.
And I'm not.
And the road commissioners may, may prefer to do it differently. I, you know, that's a decision you guys can make.
I know. So, I mean, so is it going to be like a repeat? It sounds to me like it's a repeat of last year, that the town departments aren't going to be taught individually with an individual from the warrant and finance committee.
Call them into a public meeting. That's all they're saying. Call them into a public meeting. Let's revise that position, that.
What I'm asking is that you're not going to be able to have a conversation with a department head one-on-one unless it's at a regularly scheduled warrant and finance meeting, is that's what's being said.
Honestly, I don't, I would like to see it in public myself. That way there, the individual doesn't get put on the spot to the point where something was said and wasn't said. I like to see it in public where everybody else can see it.
Or maybe even the, there's an adjustment that if we're talking about the entire town budget, because we're talking about the treasurer here. And, you know, he may have a little bit of a, you know, a point when it comes to, you know, let's just say that this was last year and they were looking into the fire truck. You know, can the liaison go talk to the fire chief about all the fire truck specs? That's one thing. But when the treasurer has called in about the entire audit, all of the expense reports, all of the revenues, not to put anything, take anything away from any of the other budget, any of the other departments, but when she's discussing the entire town, you know, financial, that needs to be at a meeting. And that was the intent behind that paragraph. So maybe it can be adjusted to say something to that extent.
Well, in my defense, with Michelle and the audit, I called Michelle, and you know this to be true, Jen, and asked her if I had to go through you to get this information or not. I said, because for some reason, the audit wasn't put in the town report this year. And as a warrant and finance committee member, unless I know what the expenses are in this town and what the audit says, how can anybody make a rational decision on the expenses for the future unless you understand where we are now and where we were last year? And, and I told you, and I told Michelle, my first question was, what was the process that you understood? Because I don't want to get you in trouble.
Right.
That was the very first thing I said. And she said, well, just that. I don't think it's that big a deal. And I said, well, I'm not sure. She said, Jen's making copies right now, and I'll just have to make some extra copies of it. And.
And this was right after the meeting. She hadn't been reviewed with those meetings yet. We hadn't had.
Right. We hadn't talked with her.
And she, she pulled up the meeting minutes and she says, no, I don't see why this would be an issue, Dennis. It's just one thing.
That's not fair to do to her. She's not sitting in the meeting. She's, I mean, she's getting a recap of that. You know, I mean, that call should have gone through.
I'm telling the truth, Jen. And you know I'm telling the truth.
I'm not saying you're not. I'm just trying to.
So don't imply that I'm not.
Dennis, nobody's implying anything. What I'm saying is I want, I want them to hear the other side. You asked somebody that wasn't present at a meeting to read a paragraph or two and make an assumption of what that meant when the town administrator's in the other room. I mean, the board can tell, we can do whatever they want. I have no preference in this. But, you know, when the selectman is coming to me saying that it's not clear, it's still not clear, I mean, scrap the whole policy and let them go to everybody individually. For, you know, I mean, we don't, you know, the staff doesn't have a preference, but we need direction from you on what you want us to do. And I think I've said that, you know, and it, it does, it puts a bind between, you know, people like Dennis and I because of this wall, because we don't know what, you know, he wants this, you want this.
I don't know how ever had the finance committee ever was able to do the work before. I mean, this is, we got to, we're changing this, changing that. There's reasons why we're changing certain things. But I made, I made mention at the, the last time we spoke about this was, the liaison's job was to go to the road commissioner or the transfer station and discuss what their needs are and this and that, blah, 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 blah. And then that liaison's job is to bring it back to the rest of the board to blah, 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 blah. But the problem was, was that wasn't happening. The rest of the board wasn't getting the information in some instances. Okay. So we were trying to solve that problem. And the people in our staff, if the finance committee asks to have the staff, you know, to ask the staff questions, and obviously, you know, we'll try to accommodate that. That's the whole idea. We want to be as transparent as we can here. But you're making this more difficult than it has to be.
I'm not. You guys are the ones that want to change things.
But it's not a change. This is the same thing we followed last year. You should amend this last paragraph because based on what you just said, that paragraph doesn't allow for that. So either maybe change it to just town employees. I mean, maybe, you know what I mean? Maybe, you know.
Did you say the last paragraph?
Or the whole paragraph.
I'd say scrap the last paragraph.
Okay.
I mean, if you guys want to make it so that everything has to go through Jennifer, then that's how we'll do it. It's whatever.
We'll make sure everybody's.
I'm not, I'm not arguing about it.
We just want to make.
I'm just doing the best I can do as a volunteer. I don't get paid for this stuff and I don't get paid to get accusations made at me. And.
We've heard enough of that the other night, Dennis. I mean.
I don't know what you're talking about. Madam Chair, I haven't spoken at a meeting for three weeks. Okay?
Talking about the finance committee the other night, Dennis, when you made remarks about how getting picked on and this and that, I think there are, take on a position, just like the selectmen or any other committee, you're going to get people who disagree with you. And that happens. And I know you don't like it, but there are things that you do upset other people and they don't agree with everything you say, Dennis. And so I, I agree with that. And I've got no problems with that. But there is nobody that can say that I've been disrespectful to anybody at any of these meetings, because I have not. Unlike Mr. Winchell, who has a constant habit, and everybody knows this, of picking on old women, old men, and war veterans.
Old men and road veterans. He is always rude with them and very disrespectful.
You're talking about me, right?
And it's just not acceptable.
Dennis, you're up here, you're up here making an accusation that I go after old people and veterans? I mean, that's a low blow, honestly, coming from you, Dennis.
Let's try to get back on track here, okay?
And, uh, Adam, um, you, you know, to allow that, I mean, that was, that was just a real kick, right there.
Well, that's not what we're here to discuss, what you said or what he said, either one of you.
Mr. Long is the reason why we can't get more people on committees, okay? Because nobody wants to deal with the guy.
All right, again, let's, let's try to...
With all the respect for the elderly in town, I do what I can for them, I would help them do whatever, but because of yourself, maybe you consider yourself elderly, and I guess I pick on you, I don't pick on you, Dennis, I disagree with you, okay? And you come up, make your snarly remark... I, I am also a selectman, I am allowed to speak, okay? Now, you started it?
He's not going to keep bad mouth.
Okay, both of you, I said stop.
You just came up here, made accusations that I treat people in the public unjust, okay? And then you scrubbed it off like a liar. Okay, and I'm not supposed to say anything about that? I just did.
Okay, so you've, you've said your piece, you've, you've said your piece, okay? We're done. All right, we need to kind of move on and figure this out, okay?
So, if we scrap the last paragraph, how are we going to deal with meetings with the treasurer?
I s- I still feel like, I mean, she feels more comfortable coming out and talking with the whole, to give, answer the questions.
It, it's, if it's an entire, if it, it's, you know, I mean, it's different if you're having a one-on-one question about the roads, you know, I mean, a one-on-one question with a...
Right, but with her...
I mean, it's the entire town budget.
Right.
I guess the idea is that maybe Virginia, you know, may, may, maybe one meeting with the, having the treasurer present, because we might as well tell you now that she will not be at Saturday's meeting, um, maybe, you know, we, we let the, we have them draft all their questions and bring her to the next warrant of finance meeting, you know, to, to help and alleviate. I just think it would be easier if she addresses the whole board. It's, it has nothing to do with the chair, but...
No.
She's going to present a lot of information, and Kim, God love you, will use you as an example, we'd give you all that information, you take it back to the committee and it would be...
Well, right, I can't, exactly.
That's just human nature, you know what I mean?
I mean...
I would do that, I mean, I'm, I'm, got all day scheduled with her just to take line items on every line. It's, she's just trying to be helpful by wanting to meet with the whole committee at once, that's all.
No, and I believe that's the way it should be anyways.
Oh, so...
So, we take the paragraph off.
Yep.
We leave it as is, I mean, they're, you're still your town staff, let the warrant of finance and their liaisons reach out as they feel best suited, as long as they're not requesting information, and just go from there.
Should we put a, should we put something in there about that? In, in, in here about the liaisons, you know, using the liaisons and...
Yeah, let me, um...
I'm just saying, you know...
Let me work on another, do we have another warrant of finance meeting scheduled, Mr. Long?
We got one Saturday.
Well, you got another meeting outside of that?
We have a meeting, which is on the 11th.
So, let me see if, I mean, you guys can't sign anything, let me see if I can fix that verbiage by Saturday, and maybe we can just discuss it as a group.
Okay, yeah, I mean, just, because like I said, black and white, that way, it's...
I'm fine, not here.
Well, I know, but I'm just, you know...
I need your direction to tell me what you wanted to say.
Well, all right, liaisons, you know, I, I, I mean, warrant and finance should be using their liaisons.
Right, the idea is that they go and they talk to them about, why is your, you know, but, but after the budget meeting Saturday, you know what I mean?
I may not need to.
That question should be answered, I mean, fire chief, why is your budget up 3%? Why, you know, there's not, shouldn't be a whole lot of follow-up, but if there is...
But it still should be in here, because next year, it, it'll be here, y- y- you know, if that's, you know, I know you've got a lot going on, but I'm just...
I'll do my best to adjust at least when I think of saying.
Okay, all righty. Yes, you can.
On the role of the liaisons, I don't find that, um, in the past, or even probably sometimes this year, that we're as effective as we could be. And there, there isn't a lot of information coming back through the liaisons to warrant and finance. I mean by warrant and finance liaisons. I think some of the easy-to-answer questions could be done very quickly, over the phone, a, a quick email. But because the budget season is so compacted, I mean, warrant and finance committee has its first meeting in January, and that's just to basically see who's new on the board, who wants to be, um, the chair, the vice chair, that, that sort of thing this year. And at that point, I'm guessing that the department heads in the town are busy crunching numbers, because they have deadlines according to what you've set out.
I think it was like the 5th, February.
So, because the season, if you will, for warrant and finance committee is, it's not, 12 months, it's very short.
Right, and that's why the board wants to waive it.
It really starts cooking in February, and then by, you know, April, everything's pretty much done. So, if I were a department head, I would not be wanting to get any quick questions by whatever conduit of something that I have to dig around and find out. In that regard, if warrant and finance has what they feel is a legitimate reason for asking for some, what I'll call historical data from last season or the year before, then I think there should be a process that, you know, similar to what you've outlined. But I don't think warrant and finance should be asking for, um, or expecting a quick turnaround on what I consider historical information, because your department heads are already focused on what they have to do over the next two or three months. So, they don't have time to be thinking about, "Well, this is what we did five years ago, and we've been doing this, and, and now you want to change the process." Never mind that stuff. If you have a, something that can be quickly answered, call the person, I don't care, drop by their house, whatever works for everybody. If you have a more extended procedure like this, and I see the reason for it, then it should be not for easy-to-answer questions. It should be, again, if I was a department head, you know, "Don't bother me with phone calls and stuff if, if I have to really go digging and get some people to help me get the information." Then I can see this rooted process, because you do need to know, and if you're talking to one person on warrant and finance, and then that answer doesn't get shared, and somebody else starts thinking about the same thing, whether it's the chairman, the vice chairman, or whoever, but it wasn't something that the liaison told them, then the subject comes up again, and it gets regurgitated again. It's just a waste of people's time in a season where everything is crunch time.
And that's why the board felt like, just a way to get everything to everybody, but...
Right.
And, and, you know, maybe on these budget meetings on Saturday, and certainly we can't really do it much, but maybe we extend the times out, and we put, you know, I mean, 15, 20 minutes, maybe we extend the time with each department, so that's...
Spaking out.
The idea of this budget meeting is to go over this year's budget. I mean, if you want to know what, you know, the revenues for the last five years are, that might be different, but maybe we need to give them more time.
I, myself, the, the problem we have is, like, when I was, when I was road commissioner, okay? I didn't meet with the finance committee, just, Scott and I just didn't come up and meet with the finance committee, okay? We had 15 minutes on a Saturday morning, which usually turned to a crap show half the time. Sometimes it didn't, sometimes it did, okay? Um, the liaison to some of the, you know, some of the departments, honestly, doesn't even make sense. Where you'd be better off, instead of having a liaison to the roads, or having a liaison to the transfer stations, actually have the plant, the, uh, finance committee actually have that person come up and actually ask them questions of what are your needs, what, why is your budget, you know, where are your difficulties, this and that, not necessarily, you know, they're going to ask budgetary numbers, but at the end of the day, none of those numbers that they have in their hand aren't solid, they're not solid till we put them through, okay? But the problem we have is, is if you have a liaison go off to a department, okay? Whether or not that liaison in that department is favorable to that department or not, whether or not they come back with the information that should be brought back in full, okay? Where maybe instead of having all these meetings of, you know, "How, how can we change this and change that?" Maybe have some people in and ask them some questions. And, uh, and, and, you know, obviously, the school, we can't really, we could do that, but, you know, the school board's a whole different animal, okay? That, that, you really need someone to go down there and, and sit through it. And I, I believe the, the finance committee has two people delegated for that. But, but these other ones, you know, I don't think, when we've been doing this for, at least when I was road commissioner, for the nine years I was road commissioner, we never met with the finance committee other than that 15 minutes, and nothing gets accomplished by that, other than, "Here's my numbers, why did you ask for that?" And, great. Um, you know, if they wanted to get more in-depth and actually do their job, I think that would be a, a more efficient way of actually getting some, something done.
We may need to meet with the whole committee a little earlier after, maybe we'd start everything a little late on Saturday and just have these...
You know, the finance committee wants to, you know, they have their meeting, and they say, "Okay, we want to bring in the two road commissioners for a night," you know? And we don't, right now, we can't, I'm sure we can't do that now, because, I mean, time crunch, I don't, I don't know if we should or not.
Right, and we've got, you know, yeah, I mean, they have enough time to do their brief budget.
I'm just talking about the future here, then.
But maybe at the end of the meeting Saturday, the warrant, warrant and finance has a few minutes that says, "You know, I don't think I got enough information from here."
Could you stay, and I'd like to speak with you?
And let's just schedule a follow-up, but, Winchell is also a member of the warrant and finance.
All right, go ahead.
Well, I'm on the warrant and finance committee, believe it or not, and I wasn't invited, I did go to this last one, I was called by two different people, but I wasn't by the chair for the first one. And I believe it was intentional. If you knew where I was coming from, it would make you sick to your stomach. Believe it or not, I worked on 90% of flat ground road, building that road, a lot of people don't even know that. I just didn't put gravel on top of mud, it was ditched, it was done properly, but we got sidetracked. But I'm going to tell you one thing, four people stopped and said how good the road was coming out. Somebody that lives in there, go by me, never lifted a finger to say hi or nothing. I mean, this is a, an old town, I call it, you know? I tried to stop that one person and say, "I'd like to know where the property pins are for your brother." That person could not push the clutch on that tractor, quote words, "Town has a 50-foot right-of-way," quote. Kept right going. That's the one that didn't call me, that's the chairperson in the warrant and finance. And this is the reason why I didn't get invited, because he wanted to look in MMA to change all the policies to see how much power he could get to run the selectmen's job. There you go.
Good job, Ken, good job.
Okay, um, are we done talking about this for tonight?
I'm...
Can we go on to B, capital improvement committee?
All right, so I've heard from all but one member of the committee, who unfortunately I don't see here tonight, I'll reach out to him tomorrow, but, um, so it looks like for a majority, I, I do have one that I haven't heard back from, it looks like you're meeting on the, I can't hear with the echo.
I think the 15th, well, there's one on the...
Seventeenth, at 4 o'clock.
Oh, yes, sorry, I was thinking of a different meeting.
Let me look at my calendar.
Yeah, so the 17th, St. Patrick's Day at 4 o'clock...
Yeah.
For the capital improvement committee. I just want to do four for this, this first meeting, just because it's our first meeting, and, you know, we're getting together and kind of going through things. After that, maybe we can do like 4:30 to 5:30, and then we've got the selectmen meeting, you know, right afterwards, so... I just have to have a few, some time to switch between committees, okay? But, um, so, hopefully I'll see everybody there in two weeks. Thank you for joining. All right, moving on to old business, A, Canal Bridge.
Uh, Canal Bridge, so you had a concern you wanted to bring up to the board about touching the old bridge.
Well, I, not just me, I mean, other people have had...
Well, you meaning the selectmen that put it on the agenda.
Yes, yes, um, I just, I would like to, I know we've met with Wakefield, we've talked with Wakefield, and, you know, they've done everything they need to, to get this whole project together and stuff, but personally, as, as a committee here, I would like us to meet with the company to ask questions, you know, because there is an old bridge under there, a bridge that, you know, is historical, and I just want to make sure, you know, we ask the questions we need to ask, um, you know? I don't want to depend on a different town just giving us the answers.
We're going to be meeting with him, with the, uh, the guy doing the bridge.
Well, he's coming Tuesday, just, I'm not sure you're going to meet with him.
But it's just for the, the row.
Because that's not going to be on this year's budget, right, row?
No, no, we're talking canal, but...
Well, I know, but we're...
It was, it was not the same individual that we're, that's doing it, is it?
But he's coming for something different, right?
Yeah, but I don't know if we're going to be meeting with him, I mean, he's coming Tuesday to look at some stuff, grab the file and kind of go look at it, maybe a while before he gives it back to you, I didn't want it to hold up.
I was just thinking maybe we could do a Zoom meeting, because before we, you know, put this in front of the people, I would like, you know, answers to people's questions.
At least see if I can get him to one of your meetings.
Okay.
And we'll tell Wakefield that we're going to, just in case they want to show up.
Would you say Bean, is that it?
Mr. Bean.
Mr. Bean, so that was just something I'd like to do, just...
We will follow up with him.
So, if people have questions. Okay. Uh, A, new business, A, corrective deed.
So, it was brought to the treasurer's attention that back in, let me say 2000, I want to say 2000, well, actually, I have the deed here, I don't have to say anything. So, 2010, the town, um, took a, took a property by foreclosure. It was quitclaim deeded back to the property owner, um, the quitclaim deed was filed. Um, the board secretary at that time, um, just inadvertently left off one of the deed releases on the quitclaim deed. So, when you sign it back to them, you would release all of the deeds.
Mm-hmm.
She only released the deed, and she only released the lien that we had foreclosed on. So, if we foreclosed on 11, there was also a lien on 12. It's paid, and there's no, it's just, it's a...
Right, it just didn't get released, but it was paid.
Right, it just needs to be released, so Michelle has done the updated corrective deed.
All right.
So, this is back in 2010. No, thank you, sir. Just wanted to make sure that was my own father's day.
We can move on to B, Americans with Disabilities Resolution.
Are we signing, motioning to sign that?
Oh, we got a motion, Joe, I thought we just had to sign.
Does it ask you for a second?
I'm moving along.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, a motion to sign the corrective deed, please.
I'll make a motion that we sign the quitclaim deed. Uh, let me just do the lot, mapping lot, because I cannot pronounce the last name.
Yeah, neither.
Excuse me, map 105 lot 008, um, the last name is, it's Adam...
M.
Yeah, Adam M., it's about that long. McKennett Switz.
Good job.
That's the, that's the abbreviated version of the last name, so...
I'll sign that.
Okay.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, any, uh, any talks? Okay, all, all in favor? All approved? All right, so it's removed, seconded, all approved.
There you go.
Thank you.
There you go.
And to the person whose that is, I apologize for...
It's a hard name, I couldn't, I couldn't say it either. Um, all right, so moving on, B, the Americans with Disabilities Resolution, is that in our packet?
So, um, you may have seen on Facebook, it may not have, um, got an email from a resident, um, who asked that, um, got an email from a resident asking if, um, if the board of selectmen had seen this. Um, there's been some chatter on it online that, you know, make sure it gets in front of you. Um, we saw it yesterday for the very first time, um, there was some indication that someone emailed it, but nevertheless, we just got it, um, so I'm handing it right over to you. I've not gotten any calls or any other follow-up, other than the one individual. Um, essentially, it is a resolution for American with Disabilities Act Preservation Resolution, all regarding the executive orders and the masks. So, I would ask that you take a look at it, review all the documents, and I'll put it on next week's agenda for discussion. It's quite a bit of documents, quite a few pages there, yeah.
This basically says that, uh, what the governor did was illegal, correct?
That's how I'm taking it, but I'm not...
That's how I read it earlier today.
Right.
Reference in the town of Paris, that was what I was talking about.
Yes.
In our oath that we take, the oath states, states that we are to uphold the rules and state of mind.
Correct.
This is going right against that.
Whether you agree with it or not, that's, that could, true.
Okay, thank you.
So, next.
You know, and I can't stress enough, because there's so much, and certainly the town doesn't get involved in sharing our side, social media, as tough as it is some days, but whether the selectmen agree or disagree with these mandates put forward by the governor, it is your job...
We have to abide by them. We have to abide by them.
To abide by, to enforce them.
Yep.
You know what I mean? There's nothing else to say. And all we can do is turn to legal advice when we have, when we stumble.
Right.
Which we've got a very strong.
Go back to what I've said originally. We've done everything we can possibly do to try to keep the public safe, the folks in this room safe, with the rules and regulations set forth by the governor, so.
Be on next week's agenda unless you want to.
So we'll talk about it next week. Read through it. All right, um, C, Resignation.
Who is it worried by? Uh, this is a resignation from Frank Crunkel for the alternate planning board position. Says he's taken a job with the town of Kennebunk and has a scheduling conflict now. So, um, that is an alternate position, I think, that we look. Cheryl, it was only good till June of '21 as it is. So, um, once you accept it, we will, we will advertise that position for a couple of months if left.
She thinks. Okay, it's affected immediately.